Okay, I'd like to call the December 9th, 2014 meeting of the St. Oklahi School Board to order. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Kristy.
Rick Kimball.
Here.
Nancy McMorris-Odicks.
Here.
Chris Brantley.
Here.
Jim Green.
Here.
Al Kylo.
Here.
Chuck Lee.
Here.
And Mr. Faville will not be with us this evening.
Okay, for agenda modifications we have done tonight, so we'll pursue the agenda as it's written. And the first thing is spotlights on success. Superintendent Perry?
All right, presenting our volunteer of the month today is Mary Paulson, Chief of Staff.
Superintendent Perry, school board members, it's my pleasure to stand in tonight for Karina Lee, who is the Executive Director of SCEF. I'd like to ask John and Debbie Jamison and Principal Martina Mangan from Harrod Elementary to come up, please.
John and Debbie Jamison have been selected as the December Volunteers of the Month. They are currently A-Pod volunteers at Harrod Elementary. John and Debbie started volunteering in a kindergarten classroom last fall when their granddaughter entered Harrod in the dual-language program. As non-Spanish speakers, they were a little bit intimidated and unsure if they would be a help in the classroom. They were quickly assured that they would be put to good use, and they started by completing prep work. According to the kindergarten teacher Kathy Stewart, it was like the heavens opened and shone down upon her classroom. John and Debbie followed her instructions exactly and produced an amazing amount of work, but it didn't stop there. They came every day, were getting to know the students, and even started to learn a little Spanish. They both started working with students on small group projects, and the students adored them. They are positive, outgoing, friendly, kind, wonderful people that soon all the students were calling them Grandpa John and Grandma Debbie. John and Debbie returned this fall and are volunteering in the A-Pod again, but now they work with every teacher in the primary pod, helping with small reading groups or prepping material. Anything that needs to be done, they happily do. Both John and Debbie have played an important role in the success of a particular student who was struggling and responding very well to working with both these great volunteers. Other struggling students continue to make academic gains due to the tireless efforts of John and Debbie. Harrod Elementary staff are very grateful to this couple for their volunteer efforts as they are literally changing lives, one student at a time. Congratulations and thanks for what you do.
Our Business Partner of the Month, Jay Reame, Director of Communications.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, members of the board. If Mr. Gertenrich and Jeff Lewis could come to the front. Clinton Gertenrich is Principal at Shirley, and our Business Partner of the Month for December is Roth's Fresh Markets, Sunny Slope location, and this is Jeff Lewis, the manager. Shirley Elementary School has been fortunate to have Roth's as their business partner for over fifteen years. As the manager of this local family-owned grocery store, Jeff is always willing and ready to help the school in whatever way they need. Roth's has provided many products and baked goods to Shirley. One of their largest donations recently was a generous donation to the school's biggest community event, the annual carnival. Jeff and Roth's donated sixty beautifully decorated cakes made fresh from their bakery to the school carnival. Jeff and his staff are friendly and always put customer service first. Shirley Elementary staff are grateful for Roth's Fresh Markets' commitment to making active community involvement a priority for their business, so thank you and congratulations as our Business Partner of the Month.
Okay, next on our agenda is Audience Communications, and tonight we have it divided into two areas because the first one we have to hold separately, and that's a public hearing on the charter renewal for the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle Charter, so I'm going to open that public hearing and take testimony regarding that. And we have one person signed up for that, and that's Mike Weddle. Mike, if you could come forward, please. We have a limit of three minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record, that would be great.
My name is Mike Weddle, 1285 21st Street, Northeast Salem. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Perry. I am a retired J.GEMS teacher. First of all, on behalf of the J.GEMS Board of Director, staff, students, and parents, I want to thank you for your continued support of our school. It is time again to request the renewal of our charter with the district, and I want to take this opportunity to summarize our successes and challenges as we get ready to begin the process. J.GEMS opened, at the request of the district, in 2000 as a magnet school and as a charter school in 2004. We have always been fortunate to have an outstanding teaching staff, wonderfully supportive parents, and committed students. Each year we have over a hundred applicants for our thirty-three incoming sixth-grade openings. Our financial position is stable, but only thanks to careful budgeting and dedicated fundraising efforts by our parent club and grants awarded to the school to fund our field-based restoration and research projects. Most importantly, our students have been successful academically. Year after year, the J.GEMS students have earned among the highest scores in the state, not only in science, as you might expect, but in every subject area tested by the state. Again this year, J.GEMS scored a five on the state report card, the highest score possible. We are particularly pleased with the high scores earned by our subgroups, economically disadvantaged students with disabilities and underserved races. So we have been successful academically, but why? Is it because of the students we attract, or is it because of our program? We designed a study to compare the growth from fifth grade to eighth grade of J.GEMS students and students who applied to J.GEMS but were not selected in the lottery. Looking at the mean state test scores for each group, J.GEMS and non-J.GEMS students had virtually identical mean test scores in the fifth grade, but by the eighth grade, J.GEMS students scored higher in every subject area. We believe the key to our academic success is our focus on field-based environmental science. Working with community partners like the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Oregon Zoo, and many others, students have the opportunity to apply the skills and knowledge they learn in the classroom to engaging and meaningful real-life environmental issues, from snow leopard conservation in the Himalayas to tide pool species diversity on the Oregon coast. The research projects that our seventh and eighth-grade students conduct and the formal presentations that they do at the end of the year provide a focus for the entire J.GEMS curriculum. When students leave J.GEMS, they are confident that they can plan and execute a long-term project, that they have the communication skills to share their results in a variety of formats, and that they have truly made a difference in their communities. So once again, thank you for your support for the past fifteen years. We look forward to working with the district to renew our charter for another five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Mike's the only one who's signed up. Is anybody who wanted to testify during a public hearing on the charter renewal for the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing and move on to Audience Communication on other topics on our agenda. I have one person signed up. Taz, I'm going to have you come up when we get around to doing our action items, okay? Is there anybody who didn't get a chance to sign up for the testimony on agenda items that wanted to? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to our action items here. Okay, tonight we have two areas of action items, and the first is to vote on our OSBA representative from our area to the Board of Directors of the Oregon School Board Association, and we're in Marion Region, and this is Position 11, and we have one candidate, and that's Taz Morrison. Taz, would you like to come up and say a few words?
I would. Thank you very much for the invitation, Chairman Kimball, and fellow board members. It's a pleasure to be here again. I'm going to have to refer to my notes here, so if you'll bear with me. I am Taz Morrison. I'm currently Chairman of the North Saniam School District Board of Directors, and I have served there for about eight years, and I am beginning my fourth year on the OSBA And I am here tonight to ask you to vote for me for your representative for Region 11 in Marion County. The other board member that represents Region 11 is David Beeson from Silver Falls School District. The Oregon School Boards Association is dedicated to improving student achievement through advocacy, through leadership, and through services to locally elected volunteer school board members, and we do our very best to make sure that school board members have the tools and the information necessary to make the very best decisions in their communities and for their, your students. A priority for us at this time is to focus on the legislative session and to encourage local board members to engage in the advocacy process. Tonight you have the opportunity to adopt the OSBA 2015 legislative policies and priorities, and I urge you to do so. You will find that they align pretty well with your strategic plan components, especially those regarding improving student learning and continuing to develop your facilities' improvement process. We plan to advocate strongly for you with our legislators. I also urge you to adopt the Promise of Oregon resolution. This can be a remarkable advocacy and marketing strategy if you employ the tools in the toolkit which I think all of you received. If you use those tools, I think we can do a remarkable job working together through using the Promise of Oregon as a campaign strategy. The bottom line for us is funding a strong public education system, and that is the best investment that Oregonians can make. And all of us need to take an active role with our legislators. The Promise of Oregon campaign and toolkit allows us to do this. So please, vote for me to represent you, Region 11, on the OSBA Board. Adopt the resolution for Promise of Oregon and adopt the OSBA 2015 legislative policies and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you, Taz. Since she isn't a candidate we're voting on, are there any questions of Taz? Nancy?
I was just going to make a motion that we elect Taz Morrison to the Marion Region, Position 11, position on the OSBA Board.
That's a motion. We have a second? Second by Jim. Any discussion or comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, so it's unanimous.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Taz. Thank you for coming down.
And thank you for your service.
Okay, next on our agenda are three resolutions regarding OSBA activities, and we're going to need to take action on each one. These have all been provided to us by the Oregon School Board Association Board to take a look at. The first is a resolution to adopt the 2015 legislative priorities and policies. So do I have a motion from someone to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Chris? Sorry. Second by Nancy? Any questions or discussions on the legislative priorities? I'm not going to read through the whole document. Hearing none. All right, we have a motion on the table and seconded to adopt the resolution regarding the 2015 OSBA legislative priorities and policies that have been recommended by the Legislative Policy Committee of OSBA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, it's unanimous. Okay, the second resolution for tonight is to amend the OSBA constitution to modify the process for adoption of the OSBA legislative policies that we just adopted, so maybe we'll do it a little bit different next time.
So moved.
So moved by Paul, second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, it's unanimous on the changes in the constitution regarding the legislative priorities and policies. Okay, the last item is a resolution to amend the OSBA constitution to allow appointment of OSBA Board and Legislative Policy Committee members for a contiguous region if certain conditions are met, and those conditions are laid out in the resolution. Do we have a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
So moved by Paul, a second?
Second.
Second by Nancy. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Kristy? And Kristy, you'll record our votes with the OSBA? Thank you very much. And that's our action items for tonight. Next is our adoption of the consent calendar, which typically we'll adopt all that is listed in one motion unless there's something that a board member wants to pull for discussion. Tonight we have all the revised board policies that we had a first reading on last month in the consent calendar, and one of those BG six we had quite a bit of discussion on, and leadership took it back and modified it, and we've included it in the packet for the consent calendar, and if anybody wants to pull that and discuss that further, we can do that, but if you think the wording takes care of the discussion we had, then we can leave it in the consent calendar, or if you want to pull any other ones, we can do that. Also, in the consent calendar is a renewal of the Jane Goodall Environmental School Charter to give direction to the staff to work on that, as well as personnel actions. Is there anything anybody wants to pull?
I don't want to pull, I just want to make a comment, Mr. Chair. Can I do it after the motion?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
I would like to make a comment about Jane Goodall, too.
Okay.
Is that the same one you want to comment on? So why don't we pull that and talk about it?
Yeah, let's pull that.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to adopt a consent calendar as listed with the exception of pulling item 4B, which is B1, which is renewal of the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School Charter.
So moved.
Moved by Jim, seconded by?
Second.
Nancy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, it's unanimous. Okay, Jim, you were the first one to bring your hand up. How about the renewal of the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School Charter?
I just wanted to make a comment. I've actually had the opportunity to go out to the environmental school and was a judge for the final projects that those students do, and if you ever get the opportunity to do that, I would suggest that you go out and do that. The work that these kids do and the time and energy they put into their projects is absolutely amazing. I've known Mike for a while. Mike, I hope you didn't freak out when I pulled this, because I do support the renewal of the charter. I just wanted to let you know, if you ever get the opportunity to go out and judge them, they do need judges occasionally, or go out and view those final projects that those kids do after the culmination of the year. It is absolutely amazing, the work, the energy, the time. They have to do an oral report before a group of adults that they've never met before on the project that they do. It is amazing work, and when you look at the test scores that Mike shared with us tonight, I think this is a charter school that can serve as an example across the state of what a good charter school can look like, so I fully support the renewal of this charter school agreement.
Thanks, Jim.
Chris? My comments are similar. I, being a former high school science teacher and middle school principal, got offered the opportunity early on in my service on the board to be one of the judges on their panels, and I've done both the seventh grade and eighth grade groups now. And the only thing I can say is that as a high school sophomore biology teacher for about thirteen years, I would put the kind of knowledge that these students have developed about their area of study up there similar to what I would have been proud to see my sophomores in high school doing, if not even better. And I keep wanting to go back every year because I walk out of there every time I do it with a smile on my face, and because these students stand up there and they talk about what they've been studying for a solid year, and when I say studying it, I mean they're out in the field taking data, working with scientists, doing the actual work of science. And then through their nervousness as seventh or eighth graders, they start being asked questions by these panels, and these questions are not always easy. They're asking them to defend their scientific method, they're asking them to defend statements that they've made in their reports, they're asking them to do a lot of different kind of on-their-feet thinking, and these kids come through, and it's really heartening to see. And about, I think it was three or four years ago, Mike and I sat down and said, "One of the things that might really help is to really take a look at students that have been through that program compared to other students that are similar to them and see if that program really is making a difference." And this data tends to support that it is, in fact, making a difference. So I think, like Jim, that this is a program that we not only should continue, we should try to spread.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, Nancy?
I just thought the data was very impressive as well, and just wanted to put out there that I have a master's degree in science and would love to be asked to be on the panel. Thank you.
I won't talk about the fact that I'm a food scientist.
I know. He's got a master's degree in science, too, probably.
Any other discussion or comments?
I move for renewal of the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School Charter Agreement.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nancy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, Kristy. All right, that's it for the consent calendar. Next on our agenda are readings, and tonight we have one reading, and it has to do with another OSBA activity, and it's a resolution to support the Promise of Oregon that has been adopted by OSBA. And Betsy Miller-Jones, the Executive Director, has joined us tonight to give a little presentation on that. Thanks for coming, Betsy.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. I'm really pleased to be here and to talk to you a little bit about the Promise of Oregon campaign. One of the great things about the campaign and having Taz here tonight with me is that this came from our Board of Directors. It's a little different from some of the work we've done in the past in the idea that it is a public campaign with materials for you to take and use, your board, with your students, your schools, your programs, and the materials are available to you on the website and on pen drive, and I've got one for Rick.
Thank you. We'll share that.
One of the questions that always comes up is, you know, what the heck is this? And what are you trying to achieve? And if you look at the actual resolution, it has a statement at the end that really summarizes it. It states that the campaign is in place to ensure that Oregon's lawmakers continue to prioritize investments to improve the educational outcomes for Oregon's greatest natural resource, our children. So Taz was part of a committee of our Board of Directors who came together and developed this campaign, and Taz, do you want to say a couple of words about the role the board played in it before we show the video?
Sure, thank you. So we thought that the strong schools, gosh.
Strong school, strong state, yeah.
Thank you. Strong school, strong state campaign during the last legislative session was very successful. It proved to be for us in Oregon. And we wanted to create another campaign that really branded public education in our state, not OSBA, but public schools in Oregon. And we began looking at that and seeing how we might go about creating such a campaign, and we realized that if we are going to begin to meet the 40-40-20 goal in our state, that we really did have to market, and we had to advocate for public education in a significant way. And that's the thinking, I think, behind the committee, and then we convinced the Board that that was something that we ought to take on now. The part that we're talking about today, and that is the resolution, and again, I urge you to adopt the resolution, is phase one of this campaign, and there is another phase that we are preparing for as well, that will feature famous or well-known Oregonians who are products of Oregon's public schools. So this is a beginning. I think focus, excuse me, hearing and seeing students who are in our public schools pulls at the heartstrings, really speaks to our heart, and I think that's really essential to help people understand how important public school is. It's the students who are telling us, and that's critical to the success of our campaign.
Shall we show them some of those students?
You bet.
Absolutely. So Taz has some wristband bracelets to share with you, and then we're going to go ahead and show the video.
Can we have the lights down?
Yeah. Or the sound up a little, too? I don't know if we can do sound.
Thanks, Taz. Thank you.
I am the Promise of Oregon because I'm going to do so many things when I grow up. I want to build bridges so cars can go over them and under them. I want to be a painter and paint everything and travel the world.
I want to find a way to make people not be allergic to peanut butter.
I have the Promise of Oregon because I'm going to stop bullying and have everyone be friends. I forgot what I was going to say.
I have the Promise of Oregon because when I grow up, I'm going to get a scholarship, go to college, learn about endangered species, and save those endangered species.
I would like to take after my dad and be a great electrician.
And I'll swim across an ocean.
I'm going to own my own torture company.
I'm the Promise of Oregon because I'm going to make Oregon more green.
I either want to be a missionary or a comedian.
I want to be just like my mom.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm the Promise of Oregon because I want to help people bring babies into the world.
I want to help premature babies like my brother Logan.
Help children who have heart problems.
Help people understand different cultures better.
I'm going to stop digging babies.
I'm going to be the mail lady.
I'm the Promise of Oregon because I want to teach people that their mouth doesn't just come from the grocery store.
I want to change people's lives with music and theater.
This sounds kind of dirty, but I want to be a physicist.
But I'm going to discover something unknown in the deep reaches of outer space.
I am the Promise of Oregon because I want to show my passion through lyrical dance.
I'm going to teach agriculture education because without agriculture, we'd all be naked and hungry.
I'm going to win the gold medal in the 200 meter in the 2020 Olympics.
I'm going to be the first person to pole on the moon.
I hope to influence Oregon public policy and to get involved in politics.
I want to start a new family tradition by earning a college degree.
I'm going to bring more technical style to free skiing.
I want to put an end to cancer so people like my grandma don't have to suffer.
I want to write books that will take people to whole new worlds.
I'm the Promise of Oregon because I'm going to keep asking the questions that hurt about change.
I will stand up for people who cannot stand up for themselves.
I will fight for laws that will protect the environment.
I want to design buildings that are good for the environment.
I'm going to work for the right to equal opportunity for people of color and women.
I want to provide aid to people in third-world countries.
I'm going to report stories from around the world.
I want to make people happy every day.
Three, two, one.
Yes.
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 Yes, I'm the Promise of Oregon.
Yes, I'm the Promise of Oregon.
Yes, I am the Promise of Oregon.
So this is a social media campaign. We have a webpage. On the webpage, www-promisoregon.org are all of the toolkits that you need to spread this message in your district and across the state. Specifically, we hope that you will put a link to the webpage and the Facebook page on your district webpage, on your Facebook page, that you will have your photo taken. This shows the webpage right here, you can see tabs. taken, and this is, shows the webpage right here, you can see tabs across the top of it. I'm not going to go through it, I encourage you to explore it. To encourage your students and your programs and your schools to utilize the sign, there's one, this one says, "I'm keeping the promise of Oregon." It's for adults, I'd love to take a picture of all of you standing up with your sign saying, "I'm keeping the promise of Oregon," we share that on the Facebook page. We've got one like it for kids that says, "I am the promise of Oregon." You can do individual children's shots with a statement of how they are the promise of Oregon. You can also showcase programs and groups of kids doing great things, like some of them that you've been talking about. If you put the hashtag, for us oldies, that's the number sign, the pound sign, and #promiseor, it will link into our materials and magically, vroom, I don't know how they do it, but we've got some young folks who know how to make all this work in our office. Rachel Fleener is, is heading it up. They make all the materials come together and appear on both the Facebook page and our webpage. So the key is that hashtag, and we have Twitter and Instagram and YouTube, as well as Facebook, but Facebook's the only one I actually know how to operate. So one of the handouts you have tells all about it, the other one tells more about the campaign itself. As Tass says, this is the awareness building phase, the first part, to really build broad support for public education. The tools are set up for you to modify and use for your district. This isn't about us doing this campaign to everyone statewide, this is providing tools and letting you run with it. If you look on the pages, you'll see kids, some of the students in Portland have started to really run with it and do some of their own things with it, and that's what we want. Little bit dangerous, but absolutely creative and gets the message out about the wonderful things our kids can do. So you'll also see pictures of adults holding up the sign, "I'm keeping the promise of Oregon." And then, as Tass explained, in the second phase, we're going to move to talking about, talking with the legislature more about it, Jim is, is involved in that, and we are also going to be having videos of some adults who have graduated from Oregon schools and really done well in the world to emphasize that. So any questions I can answer?
Any questions, Betsy? Okay, I don't see any. Thanks for coming down and presenting to us.
All right, great, thank you. Please help us spread the word. We're looking forward to seeing lots of Salem Kaiser students and adults stating how they're the promise of Oregon and fulfilling the promise of Oregon. So, thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. And thanks for adding to the information, Tass. So this is the first reading tonight, this will come back next month for, for a vote, okay? Any other discussion or questions tonight? Okay, thank you. All right, next is reports. Tonight, we have one monitoring report, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Perry.
This is monitoring report number six against executive limitation, staff evaluation, and you have heard a lot about staff evaluation in the previous executive limitations, so I'm not going to read this to you. This deals with being sure that a licensed classified and administrative evaluation system is developed and in place, and in all cases, it is. And the fourth portion of it is related to, do we monitor the effectiveness of it? So as we've mentioned multiple times, it's that collaborative relationship with the associations that we work on these projects jointly, and in, of all the executive limitations, we are really strong in the staff evaluation one, and especially on the license side because of our ongoing work, and we are actually leaders in the state in that work. So my question to you is, do you have any questions?
Any questions on the executive limitation, number six staff evaluation report? Chris?
Not a question, it's a comment. We got together, the steering committee got together again last week, wasn't it? Just last week, and heard a, a report from Edu, Education Northwest, which is the old West, Northwest Regional Lab Group from Portland, who had done a, a study with our ten schools that are involved in the Teacher Incentive Fund Grant.
Okay.
And so we were able to see the results of how our staff is responding to and thinking, what they're thinking about our new evaluation system, and in those ten schools, the incentive funds that are available through that grant. It was generally a pretty positive report, that our staff is, is feeling very good, actually, about the, the process. There's still a lot of jury out on how they feel about the interator reliability piece of the evaluation process, meaning, do I get the same evaluation from Principal X that I get from Vice Principal Y? Those kinds of questions are still out there. There is some evidence that it's very much like the surveys that come out and say, public school systems in the United States are in a world of hurt, but my school's pretty good because they tend to feel a lot more positive about their own evaluator than they do about evaluators, which I thought was sort of an interesting piece. I, in general, I, I left that meeting feeling like things are moving along pretty well, there are some things to modify and react to, I think, and, and we're going to meet again as a committee and continue to that work, but in general, it's going fairly well.
And I will say that the student learning goals, as a piece of the licensed evaluation, is new this year, and that's a hard part of the process that we've added on.
A tough piece.
The observations are working fairly well, it's the student learning goals that's been hard, on both sides.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, on the executive limitation, I usually look for consensus around the report to see if it meets the need. Okay, we have a thumbs up, good. Thank you. Thank you, Kristi. All right, next on the agenda is information items, you'll see our, our, our schedule there for school board meetings. We don't have another meeting until January, we'll have a work session at five o'clock and our business meeting at six, so, well, after, we get done tonight, we'll be done for the month unless some special meeting comes up, okay?
We have tried to outline work session, or work session topics for the rest of the year, so that kind of gives us our framework for the rest of the year.
Okay, audience communications on non-agenda items. Okay, we have no one signed up to speak on non-agenda items, was anybody who wanted to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to board reports. Anybody have activity they want to report on from the last month or two that they've been involved in? Paul?
I had the opportunity to go to McKay High School and watch Footloose, and it was a great production, and those of you who missed it, you missed a good show. And this, this weekend, it's White Christmas at North High, which should be another good show. And I also did have the opportunity to represent the board, according to the policies, made no commitments, said very little, at least not, didn't use Rick's name on anything, in regard to the third bridge funding proposals, and I left that with Kristi, so if anyone's interested in looking at the possible funding solutions, she has the packet.
So you didn't say Rick was in favor of one over the other?
No, and I didn't even sign in as Rick, but there was a temptation.
Thanks for representing us, Paul. Jim?
I've had the opportunity, I don't think any other board member would have this opportunity, but I got to go to parent-teacher conferences over the last month, and I will say this, that in meeting with our staff that provide educational services to my kids, it's amazing the work they're actually doing in our classroom and what we're asking of them on a daily basis to deal with, with our students. I think they do outstanding work, and I think asking them to meet with parents in the evening to go over each individual student is absolutely amazing, and I'm glad we still do that in our school district. There are some school districts who are somewhat phasing that out, but I do want to say that the teachers that we met with are extremely dedicated professionals to their craft, to the kids, and to this district, and it's always a good opportunity because I think a lot of them know I'm a school board member, so they want to talk a little bit more about other things going on in the school district, which is fantastic for me to hear and get that feedback from our staff. Two other things. One, if you haven't had the opportunity to attend any of the Christmas concerts at your elementary schools, your middle schools, or the high schools, I encourage you to do that. I get to go to my elementary school tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to it because my fourth grade daughter gets to play her violin for the first time, so we're looking forward to that, but it's great, and I will say this about our music program, and I say it all the time, it is world-class when compared to every other district in this state and across the nation, so I'm very proud of that. And the other thing that I think many of us attended was the NAACP dinner up at the Eola Inn, or at the Eola Viticulture Center, the Viticulture Center with Benny and the group. I think that was a wonderful evening, it was a great opportunity to hear about what's going on in our community and working with the NAACP, so I appreciated being able to be part of that. I think, Chris, you and your wife were there, Kristi and several members of the staff were there, so it was a wonderful evening.
Chris?
Got a couple of reports. In my liaison role with SKEF and with the CTE group, first of all, SKEF, I would hardly recommend all the board members finding one of the fifty-nine minute meetings possible, and what I mean by that is that they are doing a series of over lunchtime meetings for community members to go and see what their vision is for their new building that they have purchased next door to the old SKEF office, and the vision is generally a huge one, but the big piece of it that's really exciting to me anyhow is, the Mike McLaren Center is, is the name that they're going to hang on it, and it's basically a college and career readiness center where they're just going to have all sorts of resources for families and kids and helping with that thing. So that's sort of a vision for the building, and what these meetings are is just a time for you to go see the building, to find out what their plans are for raising the funds that they need to raise in order to make that happen, and I would encourage you all to go on their website, figure out when one is that you can go to and, and go take a look. The CTE Center, we had a steering committee meeting at the center last week, and it was amazing to me because I was out there about a month ago, not even a month ago, and that place is humming. They've torn down buildings, they have put in new parking lots, they're, they've torn out walls and they're starting to put in new walls, and all of this with no district dollars, it's crazy, but it's happening, and I think we're really going to have a career tech center, and I think it's really going to come to, to be next year. I wasn't going to believe it until I actually saw it happening, and I'm seeing it happen, so I would recommend that you stop by out on Portland Road and take a gander at what's going on out there. It's pretty cool.
Thanks for those reports, Chris. Nancy?
I haven't done this yet, but I plan to go on Monday to the Capitol to listen to the South High group singing in the rotunda, and all of the high schools and many of the middle schools in our district, and as well as many grade schools are on that calendar, so I'd encourage you to really look at your neighborhood school and look at the calendar and get out there, because it's really, those are great, great concerts.
Okay, anybody leave something out there you wanted to mention? All right, we're on to our last item, superintendent's comments.
All right, I'll be quick. Do you know, though, that in a little over two weeks, we'll be six months in? Some people have said it's felt like I've been here forever. I did not say that. Jim Green. But, yeah, six months in, and I feel like my feet are on the ground, and I know the direction for the district, and have spent a lot of time listening and learning, but I know we've got some key places to work on some improvements. So thank you for all of your help in that transition time, because it was a lot to learn in a short order. So a couple things, I got to visit Operation School Bill, and I got to see their operation with, they pack up clothes, and they do special orders of clothes for our kids. If you've not had a chance to visit them when they're filling orders, it's quite a smooth operation, so that was a great visit. And then I got a chance to sit with Scott Elementary School as they had their visit from, with their Student Services Support Team, and it's an ODE school support structure, and they come, I think, three times a year, and so there's teachers, there's the principal, there's their leadership coach, and then there's a support person to help make sure that they're on the right track to meet their goals. And their teachers were highly articulate about the work that they were doing, incredibly passionate, and you could see that because we've really focused their work, they've got a new spark, I think, over their work and are beginning to see how they can make that really good difference in student achievement in their schools. So I think we'll really see the fruits of our labor around elementary, some of the restructuring we've done, in a very short order. And again, there'll be some bumps and challenges, but that was nice to see that the teachers were excited about their work and could see that they were on the track, so I think that was a hopeful conversation, and all of our focus schools have those visits with ODE, and I'm going to try to get to another one or two of those before the end of the year, but it was really powerful to watch. That's it for my report.
Thank you, Kristi. And that's it for this meet. Paul?
I did also want to mention that the superintendent is a star on the internet now. If you go to the Western Oregon University website, she's there in video, so.
Okay.
I mean, six months, she's gone from internet star, now she's internet star.
Internet star.
Obscurity's the internet star.
All right, with that comment, we were going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.